Sorry. Good afternoon. We're here, the Neutrona County Commissioners, for a regular work session agenda. It's Tuesday, January seventh, twenty twenty-five, one thirty-three in the afternoon. Our first matter on the agenda is Commissioner discussion regarding various items. We've got item A as the request for letter of support beads grant Mountain West Technologies. There's also one for Vista Beam. I think we can chat about those together. Opening it up to Commissioners, what are our thoughts? Commissioner North?
I think as the Commissioner that if we're gonna write a letter of support for one, we need to do it for all of them. So just for equity sake.
Other Commissioners? Commissioner Mel?
As we discussed prior, I don't mind doing the general duty across all. Support the business or the enterprise, but not the specific business itself. And I thought we'd kind of come to agreement on that already.
Yeah, we have addressed at least similar issues before. I think we don't want to be picking winners and losers is where we landed. And so I think that letters that are more of the general nature, that for example, the one to Mrs. Simple, broadband manager, trying to figure out which one this is. In any event, things like expressing support for projects of providing affordable access to high-speed broadband in Neutrona County is great. And I think in our opinion, it's where we name names and say we support the application of X Y Z company, where I think we're going too far. So I think there's a general understanding, at least in some of the companies I've visited with recently, that they know that's probably the more appropriate thing. So I think that from my perspective, the Commission should be able to assign any kind of general support for this grant. But beyond that, make appropriate revisions and edits to in that regard. So how do we want to proceed?
I'm a hundred percent in agreement with that, that it needs to be a general support. So all of them are basically the same thing.
So now I've got the Vista Beam one in front of me. For example, it says Vista Beam has a track record of delivering excellent results. I think that's too much. I don't think that's for us to judge. I'm not the Vista Beam police. So I would, I would think that we can use something more generic as we've used in the past and provide that to any of these types of outfits, Mountain West or Vista Beam. So I think it's this twenty twenty-three letter of support in our packet of W C B C broadband that might be, I think, Michelle, is that the go-by that we'd maybe make modifications to it and then proceed forward? My understanding is there may be a deadline as early as Friday? Yeah, I think it's Friday. So hopefully we can get final form and then have Chairman sign that when we're, you know, when we're ready. Michelle, can you make appropriate revisions or work with us on that? Okay, and then we can get that issued maybe as early as tomorrow. Anything else on that issue Commissioners? Oh, sorry. We welcome Casey Coats on this side of the table. Thanks for joining us. Welcome and let's make it a good year. Sorry about that. So then the next item is leadership. And I think what we ought to do is open it up for discussion. This would be in regard to Chairman and Vice Chairman for this coming or this current calendar year. And then while we can't take a vote today, we can do things like make indications via straw polls. So maybe that is kind of how we put a bow on it at the end of the discussion. So Commissioners, I'll open it up for discussion.
I would, would and will nominate Dave North as the Chairman for the ensuing year. This board and would also vote for him.
Other discussion? Commissioner Coats?
I would do the same.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Michelle?
Just because I don't like single horse races. If you're willing, I'd nominate you. But if you're not willing, that's cool too. It's all in your hands.
You know, I've given it a lot of thought. I appreciate the nomination. Ordinarily, I would decline it and suggest that we have a rotating chair. It's not without precedent, of course, that we have a chair that serves two consecutive terms. In, in my opinion, based on all the consideration of all the factors, including all the good that we've, progress we've made last year, but also how things, I'd like things to get wrapped up this year. I think that there are a number of reasons that would compel me to accept that nomination. Commissioner North?
Over the last couple of years, I think there's been a lot of things that, that have been disconnected. And I don't disagree that we need to wrap up everything that has been started and move forward. But there are some things that we have neglected to even move forward on the last two years. And example of that is going over the planning and zoning and getting that corrected. And that's something that I strongly believe that we need to do for the people of this, this county. We found out repeated problems throughout that document that made me a little nervous about what, what we have to come if we don't take care of that immediately. So that is one item that I am strongly supportive of putting that back on the table and getting that taken care of.
Thanks for the comments. My, my reaction to the item that you specifically mentioned, I suppose, is that you were the liaison for planning and zoning. And I think that it's been interesting to me. First, we haven't had a planner for going on twelve months, almost twelve months. So I think it's been difficult to maybe digest that for the Planning and Zoning Commission. There has never been a decision or attitude of not addressing that by this B O C C. It's more that it hasn't come before us from Planning and Zoning Commission. And I think it's in part leadership and in part bandwidth that that hasn't, hadn't occurred. So it would be nice if we were able to address a whole host of planning and zoning issues and, and maybe whoever the liaison is this coming calendar year can help to encourage that, facilitate that. So I suppose we haven't completed the discussion because we haven't done our, we haven't finished the straw poll. I think we've, we've heard from two Commissioners how they might vote tonight. Any other discussion?
Do you want to move on to Vice Chair or do you want to stay with the Chair position?
Well, I guess what I would suggest is that we ought to have at least an opportunity for anyone else to comment on their feelings on a straw poll, though there's really not a vote until tonight. So last call for any other discussion on Chair. So then turning to Vice Chair, opening it up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate or move to support Dallas Laird to be Vice Chair for this next year.
Okay, I would nominate Commissioner Melon to be Vice Chair next year. Other discussion or is there an acceptance or comment on those nominations? Commissioner Coats?
I think, given the, I guess we'll talk about the leadership talk here. You know, the political discourse has to continue. That includes a willingness to come together, work together, and have reasonable discussions in order to move the county forward. Making progress is exactly that. It's, you know, bridging gaps where we can. Irreconcilable differences be what they may, but if what is best for the county is truly what we're seeking, then it really needs to be, I guess, something worth soul-searching on each side of things and looking what we can, we can say, you know, I can get past this for the county.
Other discussion in regard to the Vice Chair? Commissioner North?
I agree with Casey, not just on the Vice Chair, but on the Chair that we need to mend a lot of fences and take care of a lot of bridges. And I do, I do believe that that's something that's, that we're gonna have to be doing this next year.
Anything else with regard to Vice Chair? All right. Then moving to the next item for Commissioner discussion is the B O C C appointments and liaison appointments.
Are we gonna do a vote like we have previously?
Well, we're not gonna do a vote. I asked.
It's not, it's not, it's not committed. It's just a vote like we have. So we have a strong, solid reckoning of where we're going tonight.
Well, I asked if there was other discussion and I didn't get more than two Commissioners to set forth their position with respect to how they would vote. So there's really not been enough of an indication. That's why I asked three or four times for any other discussion and specifically mentioned that there were only two Commissioners that had indicated a preference. So I hear what you're saying, Commissioner North, but that's, that's where we're at right now. Commissioner Mel?
So being one of the nominees, and I don't, I'm not gonna speak for Dallas, but being one of the nominees, I prefer not to speak to that. I will accept it if I am put in, but I'm, you know, not necessarily seeking it.
Well, I wouldn't, I would like to do the Vice Chairman this, this year. So I'm not like President Johnson. If I'm nominated, I'll take the job and I'll, I'll do what I have to do to represent the people of Neutrona County properly, as far as my own opinion is concerned. You're not moving in yet, are you, Mr. Chairman, to these boards, different boards, liaison positions? Where's that next?
I already indicated that we were, we had moved to that.
Okay, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. I think Casey wants to be the liaison to the library. And I have no objection to him doing it. I'm a liaison now, as you know. So I think some of these boards need to be changed up every now and then just to get new blood circulating, new ideas circulating, that kind of thing. I think you also said you wouldn't mind doing the Juvenile Crisis Center, and I'm okay with that as well. But you have to speak up because they can't get a head nod on the. Okay, go ahead.
So with, with respect to boards, yes, that's, that's correct. I've spoken with Commissioner Laird. I would not mind being on the Library Board or the Y C C Juvenile Board. That absolutely would pique my interest. That said, I think there's, I think there is some. I don't think there's any harm in retaining a board if that's something that's desired. I think that some, you know, changes in leadership potentially. I think there is also the need for some stability in different areas with liaison positions. So moving forward and keeping that in mind, it's, I don't think that there's ever a need to kick the entire pile of ants. And I think that as we move through these, we need to ensure that we have some kind of a equitable representation across the Commission. I think that's also important, being as the public did vote us in to represent them across in the Commission and across these boards.
Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, oh. I, I guess what I would recommend and look at is are there any particular boards that the current Commissioners are sitting on that they would choose to relinquish to start with and see, see where we go from there? See what's available, see what they're comfortable with currently, and then move on from that. That way we can talk about which ones we need to fill and which ones we don't. You know, Commissioner Laird did say that he was happy to relinquish the two. I'm happy to relinquish the P S C C Board and at least for right now. There may be others in the future. We have switched stuff around, but a lot of the boards, it's like the Hall of Justice and Detention Center, even though they're separate boards, the meetings are basically at the same time, back to back. So that's almost like it's just one board. No, it's not officially, but it's like it is one. And the Fire Board is usually a once, once a year meeting. And the biggest responsibility with that is signing the checks that are associated with the different departments that go out on modeling fires and stuff like that. So it's not, it's not a big time-consuming board. And I think that that's something that we just need to, I think we do need to be equitable in how we distribute things and make sure that if you want to stay on a board, that's fine. If you don't, then that's fine. But I think the, the main ones are gonna be the ones that were left over by Commissioner Freel.
Right. So I, I do feel that, that the general sentiment that if a Commissioner wants to stay on the board, that's important. But I also feel, and this kind of dovetails with what Commissioner Coats was talking about, even if we're on the board or we're the liaison, that's, that's not enough. You actually have to engage with it and go to their meetings and not be disruptive and not refuse to sign the paperwork. And so I think that, you know, your head and your heart have to be in it. And so I, I think that if it's not, then you ought to be looking at getting off. And, and if you're not on it, then you ought to be cautious about getting on it. Maybe you're not the right guy for that job if your head and heart be in it. We do have not only, the, the, I guess the ones I see for Commissioner Freel and you guys probably, I know you have, I think you all have it in front of you. I see C N F R, I see M P O, G I S and Metro as being vacant. Am I missing any that Commissioner Freel had that he, you know, any other vacancies? So we need to address those for sure. And, you know, Casey, if there are questions about what some of those things are, I mean, I'm sure you, you know what C N F R is. If you said, well, what is M P O? Just ask and we can just give you a brief overview or G I S and what's involved in that. I know and I'm thankful that you've been real active in your, your engagement with the Commission ever since the primary election. So thanks for that. But are there, maybe we should take a pause there and say, Casey, are there certain boards on this list where you don't really know what the heck they are? So you don't know if you would be on them or want to be on them or not?
You know, luckily Michelle put together this wonderful packet that displayed what they were all about and I took the time to read them. So I have a pretty good handle on them.
Good.
So thank you for that.
Okay, so then are there others that Commissioners would want to relinquish? So Dave, you said P S C C. Others that Commissioners would like to relinquish? And Dallas, you indicated the Library and the Juvenile Board. Commissioner Mel?
Yeah, I've got a couple that I'm gonna open up, just if anybody's interested. Number, or letter E, the A R A J P B. It's the golf course, Casey.
Just a minute. Did I hear you correctly, Commissioner? You want to get off of that board?
I'm opening it up. I don't need to get off of it, but I will.
I, I would take that board under one condition. I, I don't think signing that form that their lawyer drew up, where a elected county commissioner has to remain silent about what goes on at their meetings. I understand their executive meetings are protected by statute. But I wouldn't mind getting back on that board because I really do know a lot about the golf course and the golf course area and that kind of thing, past experiences. But I couldn't, when I was on there to begin with, I just, I didn't want to get in an argument with them about signing some form that their lawyer drew up. It isn't that the county attorney at that time told me I shouldn't sign.
Right. It's, it's still a requirement for that board if you're interested. I'd, I'd suggest to you, I'll stay on it until such time. It, it suggests that you take and talk to them and see if they can't revise that.
Yeah, I knew they were having some of their rules revised. But I don't think it's authorized, statutorily authorized thing that you can silence a county commissioner, even if you sign the form. I know that you and Peter both signed that form, but I, my own personal legal opinion to myself is not sign it because you go to a meeting, you have to be able to discuss with your constituents what happened. Now, they have a, just like our meetings that require executive conditions. I understand that, but they, I, the way that thing was worded, they, you couldn't talk about anything that happened in a public meeting. That's the way.
No, and that's what I'm saying, suggesting that you talk to them.
Yeah, I'll look into that.
And but until that point, unless somebody else wants it, I'll stay on. And then you can, if you can work it out with them, then it's yours.
Good, good.
So it's that one. I'd like to stay on Advanced Casper. Number I, number J, Economic Development Joint Powers Board. I'd go ahead and let that one go. That one's kind of interesting sometimes. Casey, if you're, if you want to know what's going on in the area.
That, that's also one that doesn't, I mean, if somebody else wants it, that's fine. I'll stay on it if they don't, but.
The Rec Board, item K, I'd like to stay on it. Item M, the C N F R, I don't mind going back onto it. And then you for the Fairgrounds. But I'm, I'm gonna stay on that one.
The Fairgrounds and the C N F R are both on Monday nights, so aren't they?
Different, no, different, bit different scheduling. Last time I was on the C N F R Board.
Well, if there's a conflict, you need to figure that out.
Yeah. It's, it's quicker.
Mr. Chairman?
Michelle.
I, I wanted to, hang on just a second if you.
See when C N F R is having their
We could, we could text Commissioner, former Commissioner Freel.
Right.
Commissioner Laird, I, I do want to relinquish Y, the Community Action Partnership in Neutrona County. I mentioned that to Casey too. I don't know whether he wants to do that or not. Casey, I thought you might have been interested in the C N F R.
C N F R is one of the. Commissioner Melon has more, more heart in that and I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. My, my feeling is I'd like to stay on the W C C A Board regardless of what happens with the chairmanship. I know Commissioner Melon started that as Vice Chair and then continued it one for an additional year. So I'd, I'd like to keep that. I think there are a lot of interesting things going on. You know, just like to continue that one. With respect to Airport Board, I'd be happy to continue that. If someone felt strongly, let me know. I do feel strongly about staying on the Health Board. I have I have some interest in serving on C N F R, although I think that gets really busy, at least in May and June, and those are kind of tough months for me. So I'm, even though I'd have some interest, I'm probably not the, the best guy for the best Commissioner for that, at least this year. So, you know, we do have a couple of committees and task forces that are there at the bottom of the list. We'll need to address those before we're done. That's, that's kind of, those are my thoughts. Yeah, no, that's fine. They've got their mics on and sidebars and.
The only thing that I, I do believe that the Chairman should be the one that's on the W C C A Board. Other than two years ago, that's been, that's always been the case. And I think there's a really good reason for that. For disseminating information and everything else. I just think that that's something that needs to be, that that, that is a position that should be reserved for the Chairman unless there's a really good reason not to.
Well, you and I have both attended, well, I guess I attended the W C C A Board meeting yesterday. And I'll provide just a brief update on that, but I'm, I'm very much aware that that group of twenty-three individuals is not. There's kind of a, there are a number of chairs and non-chairs, so. I think in terms of disseminating information, I think that we ought to be doing that on all of these boards we're on anyhow. And I think we commonly do do that. Just one of the, I guess, the definition of liaison.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'd like to see is a balancing of, of these boards in terms of the dividing them up equally among the Commissioners and giving them each a chance to serve on these different boards. Like I've always wanted to be on the Fair Board. And I know Mr. Melon wants to be on that and I'm not, I'm not saying I want to replace him, but I just always kind of liked to, wanted to be on there for a year. When I came on this Commission, maybe that's what was gonna happen, is that these boards shuffle around and everybody'd get a shot at, at, at being the Chairman and Vice Chairman and get a shot at some of these boards. For one or two people to just hold on to those for the whole four years. It just wasn't something I thought would happen among a five man commission. I thought it'd be more of an equal. An equal deal among all of them. And so. You've been the chairman, you've been on, you've been on that board, you're on, you're on a lot of heavy duty boards and you've done a good job, truthfully. My opinion, but I think that some of them ought to be shuffled around.
Well, Commissioner Laird, I've.
That's just my own opinion.
Sure, sure. I appreciate that. I've indicated only two boards that I'd like to be serving on. I, I indicated. Willingness to. Not be on other boards. I know that. You know, for example, Commissioner North's been on parks a long, long time and it's because he's passionate about it. I think, I think there are other commissioners, including myself, that would. Enjoy serving in that capacity. So, you know, I, I get what you're saying about rotation on some of these boards. I think that is useful for the commissioners, but it's extremely useful for the boards themselves. Get some fresh blood in there. But I don't think that we need to be switching it up just for the sake of switching it up. And I think we've done a pretty good job here, including today of. You know, being open minded about folks, you know. Expressing their preferences and then expressing maybe where they're not as keen on serving and then ones that people want to relinquish. And you've done that with regard to two or three.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Michelle. On a couple of these. Like the parks board. And the library board. Those should be liaison positions and not voting members. So, I mean, I, I'm just, I was just like kind of looking through there to make sure that we have those in the right place because there is a huge difference between. No, I mean, not, 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 I'm saying this as much for Casey's benefit as anything else is that the liaison, basically you're there to represent. And transfer that information back to the commission and from information from the commission to them. Whereas a voting member, you're actually, you're, you're included in executive sessions, you're included in that vote. And that, so there, there are some differences, you know, as far as those go. And those are two that are actually liaison positions. And I'm assuming. I'm not sure which other ones are. But I know those two were actually liaison positions.
I'd be happy to go onto the GIS and the metro oversight, Steve's place.
Thank you. Sold.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to bring this up, but I, I'm not sure what this info share is. If anybody can tell me, I'd be happy to hear it.
Was it listed on the?
I remembered I went to one meeting and that's the last I ever heard of it. Two years ago. No, nobody's really a member. They just, they just gather. I remember, yeah, okay, I got it. Thank you.
So. No one has jumped on the MPO. Train. Is there any on which?
I'll do the, I'll do the MPO. I know Casey's already on there. Mills on a different perspective, but I'll be happy. To, to take that over and. Here if you'd really like to be the liaison at the park board meetings, that's fine. It's just. Like I said, it's just a liaison, so it's not, it's not really. Not really a whole lot that goes on from that perspective is other than answering questions that they're, that the board has usually.
Commissioner Coats. Okay, Commissioner Mill.
No in regional water, Dave, and if you get the chairmanship at the time that they have their meeting, do you want to stay on that board then?
Right now, I'm the vice chair of that board. Short term, yes. Long term, no. I know that doesn't answer your question right away, but there's a couple of things that we're dealing with right now on regional water. We're gonna have. Five new, four or five new board members at this next meeting. So for consistency sake. Down the road, I would be willing to relinquish that, just not right now because it needs to, do we need to have a little bit of consistency, but. Toward mid-year. I'd be, I'd be happy to discuss that with anybody that would be more willing to step into that role. So. Cause this next year, we're gonna have. Three new city. People on there. One new one from Burnin'. So it's gonna be. Just for consistency sake and know what's going on. That's the only reason why I'm like to stay on the short term.
Mr. Chairman. I'm trying to keep tally here. Short of Casey, two for you and mine, I'm not really sure what the other commissioners want to keep a hold of and what. And then that opens up what? I'm, I'm kind of. I don't have anything. What, what do you want to keep? Dallas, I mean.
The Hall of Justice. Hook it down the list at the. Boardhouse Security Committee. Or a hospital, although that could heat up. I would like to give up community action partnership. Casey wanted the library board and I think that's a good one for different points of view to come on as often as we can do it. And the juvenile. Crisis center. He was a deputy sheriff and all of that. He's aware of those issues. So I think he'd be pretty good at that. I wouldn't mind doing the one that you kind of want to get off if I could straighten out with them as to this written agreement they want to sign.
Any info share?
Pardon me?
Info share.
Yeah, they had one meeting in two years, so.
So I'll stay on it?
I'd be happy to go on the community action partnership.
Those are two Casey, which pretty much run themselves after, you know, it's a budget issue mainly.
And so Dave. Same question.
Well, if, if I am the chairman, I would prefer to be on the WCCA. The fire board is limited and once a year type thing.
Okay, do you want to be on it though?
Fire board, yeah, yeah. Mainly because I've got the most experience in that back in that area. Anybody on the board. The detention center and the hall, hall of justice, like I said, those are pretty much one board. I mean, you know, they meet at the same time, back to back.
So do you want to stay on them?
And I'll, I'll be happy to stay on those regional water down the road if somebody else would like that. I would be happy to relinquish that one. Park board, if somebody else really is, wants to be the liaison for that particular board. I have been on it for a long time, but that's. That's something that. Push comes to shove, I, I am willing to relinquish that. I'm willing to relinquish the position on the economic development board if somebody else has more desire to be on there than I do. But I will serve if, if we need to. I would like to be on the, I'll take the spot on the MPO board. Since that's open. I think Casey said he was going to take the PSCC.
If no one else wants it, I'd be, I'm taking the PSCC.
And then I'll. I'll stick with the liaison for the planning and zoning, which is. Something that we all do anyway, so. Bottom. Is that?
No, that helps me.
Okay, sure.
You know, I'm wondering gentlemen, if that planning and zoning should have two liaisons or two. Cause I wouldn't mind working on. On that board myself.
Well, it's not really a board.
Well, what is it?
Basically, you talk to them and.
We do that anyway, don't we?
Yes, we do, so.
Yeah, my, my thought remains that want to serve on WCCA or directors, the health department. Not hearing anybody say they want to be on the airport board, so I'm happy with that. Those are. Those are the ones that I've been on. We do have those at the bottom. Opioid fund, the city county joint committee. We need two commissioners for that. I indicated that it would be two commissioners and the city would like to set up a meeting as early as mid-January. I think there will be quite a bit to do for that. As, as we try to send out a request for proposals and. You know, put that fifth member on there from the community. I would s- serve on that. But if there are two of you that want to also serve, then that's just fine with me. I don't need to serve on that. Mental health task force, I've attended the meetings and have been in pretty close contact with those folks anyhow with regard to the health department. So I think it makes sense for me to continue to be on that.
Peter, can you tell us a little bit more about that? I, I'm just not familiar with it.
Sure. So you were at the meeting when Anna Kinder and the coroner. Came and Ashley Bright attended. Couple other individuals attended, former council member Jay Sutherland. Since that time, the mental health task force has met, they met with I think fifty-three attendees. To try to develop or to try and get some traction on improving our community. Mental behavioral health. Situation. There, I thought maybe I provided an update at, at one point in November, December, but. Do you have specific questions or does that give you?
No, no, I, no, I just, I just wasn't sure exactly what all, what all it was. So that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I think moving forward, it will be. Oh, meetings maybe every other month. And then I think they'll be, they're going to try to, I believe they're going to try and break it down into a couple of different components. Maybe one is youth, maybe one is treatment, maybe one is, you know, whatever. And then if, if you, as an attendee, are really passionate about youth and you spend more time with that kind of subgroup. That's the vision, but it's not really written down on paper yet. It's still in the formulation phase. There's also this facilities task force. That I guess I came up with so that we get some traction there and give Garrett some assistance. So that there can be a review of the facilities, that means buildings, that means. You know, anything. Not just buildings, it could be broader than that, but I think we need some, this commission, I think needs some guidance. We might not be able to hire a consultant to look at every riser pipe owned by the county. But we sure have ten or so buildings that we ought to get a really good handle on and, and plan. Kind of that. Medium and long-term replacement repairs improvements so that we're not blindsided. It kind of tries to pick up from where the conversation was, including Commissioner Laird's. Longstanding desire and mention of a. City of Casper facility study, so. Yeah.
So.
And I, I would just interject, I wouldn't mind being on that as well.
So looking at that compared to the Hall of Justice and Detention Center Joint Powers, it almost dovetails right into that. We need two commissioners. It could probably be held. Insequently after that meeting potentially, everybody's there, the sheriff is there or his representative. Garrett's there, everybody's there basically and the city just needs to leave at that point basically for that meeting. So that'd be my suggestion is just have the two commissioners that are doing the joint powers for the detention center and Hall of Justice do it.
That would. I don't have any problem with that, but one thing that because of the scope of this. I do think that it'd be. A long way ahead by having the entire commission be updated by Garrett on which direction he wants to go and. In which area they're moving in. We can give him support and. Basically guidance as far as where we want to go with that, but. I think Garrett's very capable. He knows all these facilities and he can walk around and he can take somebody through and he knows the areas that he's already been, already identified. So we're not duplicating efforts and stuff like that. So I, I understand having, you know, wanting the desire to have the commission involved. But I really think that the entire commission should be involved and not on a quarterly basis like we have the other two meetings. But set it up so that if there's something that comes up, we can actually set it up in a work session and maybe take ten minutes and go over it. And all five of us are updated at the same time and we all know exactly where we're going.
Yeah, so I discussed this at length with Garrett and he was really keen on the idea. He was excited about the possibility. I agree with you, Commissioner North, that, you know, there need to be updates to the whole commission. The whole commission ought to have some involvement in this and what we ultimately decide to do. But it's kind of like the opioid fund joint committee. Garrett would be spearheading that, but commissioners, he, he needs some help. And this isn't a ten minute kind of thing. This is on the front end, quite a bit of time and energy. In, including right away because the idea would be those two commissioners and Garrett and maybe one or two other individuals. Could try to define the scope of a RFP that we could then put in our budget come budget time in May. And so if that's a fifty thousand dollar study or if it's a. Couple hundred thousand dollar study, whatever it is. There's kind of an urgency to that. And so that's why I've got on here starting mid-January. And, and that's why it's maybe not. The entire commission in mid-January or, or early February. So I'd still like to see it happen like this. And maybe that's only a meeting or two. I think by definition, that task force, as soon as it's kind of. Given some suggestions on some scope and given Garrett some feedback, that might be, we might be. Given some suggestions on some scope and given Garrett some feedback, that might be, we might be mid-February and he might come before us and say, okay, here it is. And then have our chance to to investigate or inquire further with Garrett at the time. So I still think it'd be a good idea, I think that you could dovetail it with the, um, Hall of Justice JBB, uh, Detention Center JBB. I think you'd wanna meet or be prepared to meet, um, a couple times in the next thirty days for sure.
Mister Chairman, where did we leave, and I agree with what you just said, the opioid fund committee, has that been? Who wants to be on that? Here specifically?
So far, only Peters want to be on it.
I don't feel like I have to be on it, but, um, I've had, you know, some. Discussions with, uh, city manager and the mayor, uh, last fall, so. I'm kind of up to speed on it, but I could also get any of you up to speed on it too, we really haven't met for an organizational meeting yet, so it's a good time to. Get a couple people on that. Commissioner Laird, do you, do you wanna be on that or other commissioners?
Yeah, there was a possibility, I I wanted to be on that, yeah. I gave up three, three for the new guy, so I'm trying to just get, I'm just trying to get some, some that, uh, maybe other people don't want.
Dallas, you got six so far.
Do I?
Yep.
They're all pretty much the same, aren't they? They're all just the buildings.
Uh, three of them are, I'm only counting Hall of Justice and Detention Center as one though.
Then.
That's, yeah.
Then maybe the one that you and I talked about, the golf course. Did you include that either?
I haven't included that yet.
Well, it just depends if whether anybody, if somebody else wants the opioid thing, it's fine with me, I mean, but I would consider it.
What are we doing with the facilities? Have you decided on that one yet? Who's gonna?
We have volunteers per se.
Okay. Kinda tossing that back around, Dallas and I are.
Well, I I I do wanna, I do wanna do the facilities because I'm involved in the facilities and I've. Talked to various people about doing a study on the silly spec, talked to Garrett about it today, so I am very interested in doing that one.
And I, I can. And you wanna be on the opioid task force with me?
Sure.
And I can do the, I can do the other one for the facilities.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if Jimmy, if we're gonna dovetail it with the. Hall of Justice and Detention Center, which are biggies, then. We already, we're already got the background up there as far as what's going on and some of the other stuff, so.
Mister Chairman, may not be appropriate, but I would like to sit on on that facilities, um, board discussions if if possible.
I think that would be wonderful. And since you're not a commissioner, then we don't have to announce those meeting dates.
So.
Michelle, can you, you're the secretary or the the note maker for Hall of Justice, um, Detention Center? So I I hope that you could also attend the meetings, facilities, or. About the same capacity. Unless, unless Tracy, unless our clerk wants to. Make somebody.
Mister Chairman, um, Michelle and I can get that figured out for sure.
Thank you. Tell us what Italian looks like.
Trying, uh. Okay, so the next, is anybody interested in Economic Development Joint Powers? Uh, Dave and myself are on it currently, both of us have opened that up, if you, if not, then I'll be on it if if. It doesn't matter to me, I was just opening things up.
And that's a quarterly meeting, it's not a, not a monthly.
I served on that when I first, um, got on the commission, it's, uh, actually quite interesting, um, there's some really good board members on it. But I'm okay with not being on it at this time. Or you're, it seems like you're encouraging that.
Well, I'm just saying.
I think I'm okay. If you'd like. I guess you're both willing to serve and you're both willing to get off of it.
That's what I'm saying.
So I, I think you should continue to serve.
Word it looks like to me, they're in sir.
Economic.
CNFR sounds good. I don't wanna take it from you. Um, so how many, what are, what are yours then? Remind me, would you?
Mine?
Yeah.
Uh.
CNFR unfair.
Amco renews right now until, until, uh, Fisher learns, if that worked out with them, but currently it's. That one, then. That's Casper. It's a report, CNFR. Central Wyoming. Well, that's, that's kind of what I'm saying, if I can, whatever, if anybody wants to be on, I'll be on. So, anybody, or them desire to get on it?
On which one? Which one?
Oh. Mark. It's fine.
Jim, what I, what I really wanted to do is play you a game of golf or who gets on that golf course committee.
No, but, uh. Do a three-gun match.
Oh, okay. Or karate, a karate exhibition.
Um, okay, so I'm gonna be on. Ours as well. Does anybody wanna take Dave's spot or not? And so, it sounds like Dave's still on it. That's pretty much it. Um, the only two that we need to let the dust settle on would be the Parks Board and. I don't know.
You what?
Are you giving up the Parks Board, Dave?
I said I would, if somebody really wants it, that's, that's fine.
Well, it's, it's kind of interesting now that we're moving into a trustee. Parks Board situation, whether or not we even need one, right? Dave or I would be the liaison to the five of us, right? Hey, Casey, guess what happened at the meeting? Wait, you were there, Jim? Oh, same. Yeah. So, so maybe we don't need one now, Heather, do you have any comment on that?
Uh, Mister Chairman, I guess I was thinking this was the advisory board, that this would be the liaison to it, I I don't know if the advisory board is still meeting.
They are.
Okay.
They are still meeting.
So I think at this time, um, because it's still in place, it would be the liaison to that body.
And and generally what I do is end up answering questions that the board has. At those meetings, so.
I, I think things are in a state of flux and I tendered my resignation as treasurer of the Parks Board, uh, trustees today and. So you guys are gonna have to deal with that at some point, um. I, uh, think they're in enough flux that I'm not interested at being on the Parks Board, Parks Board liaison this time either.
Okay, so Dave stays here, WCC.
I still believe that the chairman should be the one that's. Just representing the county at that. Like I said, other than two years ago, that's, that's been the way we've done it, and I don't see any reason to change that.
Do we address the. I suppose the Parks Board trustees can address the officers of that. Organization at the appropriate time, which probably not now today. Everybody agree? Bishop Millen, you're, you're still counting and working furiously through that, let us know, otherwise, it seems, go ahead.
Chairman, it looks like Dallas got about six, and this is just a rough thing with my chicken scratchings, Dallas has got about six of them to attend, um. Even though like Info Share doesn't really meet, it's still, I'm still counting at the Hall of Justice Joint Powers, it's counted once as well. Uh, Casey, you're at seven, Peter, you're at four, Dave, you're at nine, and I'm at six.
Uh, Jim, just so you know, the. Security committee at the courthouse across the street only meets. Quarterly.
So you're really slacking off then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted you to know, I'm not working hard on that every month, that's it.
I see that.
Maybe it's even every six months.
Regardless, for our list, that's pro, that's about our totals.
I, I guess, um, I don't have maybe as many as some of you. I've mentioned that the airport is a minimum of three hours a month, that's how long the meetings are. And typically there's, you know, there, there might be miscellaneous things come up. Um, Health Department with the building and with the other stuff going on, that's a busy board, has been, and I expect continue, will continue. Think the opioid stuff will be busy for at least the first quarter, um, maybe beyond that, and I think. There could be quite a bit of time on mental health, um, Dave, Dave, I would do the. Economic Development, um, Board if if you wanted, I guess I'd serve on that with, uh, Commissioner Mill. Um, that put a little bit of, um. The burden, uh, on me, so if we wanna do that, that's fine, Economic Development JBB. I did serve on that before, but I'm, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, that keeps me down to eight.
I know that I've spent quite a bit of time this last. Second half of this last year. Uh, on Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees organizing and getting, getting things. Moving on that, and I'll continue to just volunteer my, my time with Commissioner Laird, um, unless you feel uncomfortable with me being on that one.
Now Dallas, she only five, that only meet once a year maybe.
Sounds like he's got that planned out, doesn't he?
You should put exposing my genius on low.
So, are you guys doing that or not?
Well, what do you mean, on the Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees?
Yeah.
No, Dallas is gonna keep that and I'm gonna put him to work one of these days on it, um, but no, I, I think that might wrap up a little bit, I'm hopeful that it will. Thanks, Commissioner, um, but I'll, you know. Provide whatever guidance, um, Commissioner Laird wants me to provide on it, so I'll just be a hand, a helping hand. But I know there's a strong desire that that board meet this month too.
Strong desire that that board actually do something and that, uh.
So to move this meeting along. The Bugaboo is the WD, WCCA Board. What I would propose to the group would be, let's hold off on that until the selection of chairman, then we can come back and readdress it as the group at that point. Since everybody seems to be. Hesitant due to that being potentially chairman, non-chairman, whatever position. Yeah, no, being on that board also, not as the, the chairman, it, it's, it's not a rule, um. It depends on how much time you have, whether you can work it into the schedule or not, um. Basically, so. You know. Maybe we have you guys arm wrestle for it, I don't know. Leg wrestle, right there.
So I don't necessarily see the. Point by an honorifics with the, with the chairman's spot with any particular board, I think that's shaky ground to continue down, um, I think. I think that if. The chairman. Has time. To juggle that board and be on other boards, then I don't think that it's that big of an issue, but I just, I think that. There's a lot of basis and just, just because a chairman. You continue to get that board.
One thing I can say, the reason why I had so many boards is because I'm retired. And I did have the time to do a lot of it, so, um. At least sort of retired, anyway, more so than most of you, so, uh. So, yeah, I mean, that, that's one of those things, anytime that the boards or their, our commitments suffer because of other things and. Then we need to relinquish it, but that's one reason why, you know, I did say that with a couple of the boards that do take time, they're a regular. That I am willing to relinquish those down the road, it's just right now is not the best time to do that.
So, here's my observation. It gets back to what I made earlier, and this has nothing to do with. I think everybody's pretty much on the boards they've been on, have done a good job on the boards now. I think Jim, you've served, haven't you served two times on the WCCA Board?
One.
Once, and then so, and then Peter's had one. And so in my four-year term, you both have had one. I kind of always thought I'd like to do it my last year. Too, so I'll just kind of announce that, but, uh, I'd like to see that one move around a little bit, and it has nothing to do with. I actually think, uh, Peter's done a good job on all of this stuff, really, and I know he's got a. He's got a couple of pretty heavy boards, in my opinion, I was on the airport board myself for five or six years, so I know that. The issue's there and some of the issues are probably gonna come up there, and this health board is a heavy-duty deal, cause they're getting that building going. And I think that, uh, having another voice from Natrona County on that WCC Board isn't gonna hurt anything. And, uh, it's always good, I think, to have the chairman, because there are other chairmen down there and. And my recollection of past commissions is the guy that was the chairman always went down there, I think we. We diverted from that, uh, since I've been on the board, and I think Jim did a good job, all of that, but I still think those things ought to be rotated. And I think that some of these guys that have been on these boards, you've got one board, a guy's been on it almost twenty years, I just think those are, that's too long to be on a board. I think that it's just like everything else in the county. Things get old and things get fresh, and, and, and we've gotta pay more attention on keeping things fresh in this, uh. In our government and in our. in our government and in our buildings and everything else that we do. So that's just my, my, just my general belief there.
Yes Chairman. So the only concern that I have is, is Dave's nominated for chair, and from the straw poll, he'll have it. So that's a, that's, that's a big, big board that he needs to do, pay attention to. He's got the other eight, plus he's currently Chair of the Parks Board. I, I'm just concerned with bandwidth, is all. Dave, I, I think you, you only have one board that is a Dallas board. And that would be the fire one. Everything else is, are, can be fairly heavy lifts or substantial time sinks if, if things go sideways, so you know, especially this board and the chairmanship for the, the park work. So between those two, plus everything else that you're, you're in, besides the one, I, I'm just concerned over time, regardless whether you're retired or not.
If I didn't, if I couldn't handle it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't volunteer for it. That's one thing I learned a long time ago, is that the time commitment and what it takes. And like I said, some of these boards down the road, I am going to relinquish. You know, the Economic Development Board, Peter took that one, so I don't have to have that one. That was limited, there's a lot of these are, that are pretty limited at this point in time. So I'm not concerned about being able to handle load at all, I'm really not. I've handled, I've juggled a lot heavier loads than this in the past, and then
Jim, how much time does that take? WCC Board?
Depends on what they have going on at the time. When I was in it, there were dealing with the building costs down there for purchasing building. And, and the different things like that. I can't speak to what was going on with cameras in it, but my time was taken up with a lot of the building down there.
Would you, would you like me to? Yeah, I would, I'd like it. What this last calendar year was like. There was substantial time involved in getting petitioning WCCA to file an amicus brief on the land use case out of Teton County. There are special meetings where certain action is being proposed. That yesterday's meeting was to consider filing an amicus brief in the Wyoming Supreme Court in a case related to the government community statutory cap. It's being challenged as unconstitutional. And there's good discussion yesterday, the board ultimately decided to join or to file an amicus brief. Even though the good discussion both ways, that we're here to protect our citizens in each of our counties. Ultimately, if, if that's deemed unconstitutional, for example, and there's a five million dollar judgment, how is Natrona County or Weston County or Niagara County, how would they possibly pay for that? And so basically, the governmental liability pool, that's not exactly what it's called. But in any event, they're moving forward, and that would be the, the brief we would, would join. That happened twice last year, well, I guess one was this year, but other than that, there's quite a bit of work during this time of year, considering what position the WCCA may take on, or recommend to be taken by WCCA, the General Membership, when we consider statutory legislative bills and Senate files that are being proposed. So that's kind of the first level after recommendation by staff, so there's quite a bit these next couple of months. Otherwise, it's not that, there's a monthly meeting, that's it. So maybe a couple, they hire one, they hire their own lawyer to handle all that. Their own law firm. Outside counsel, yeah. So that's, that's a recap of what WCCA
And then he gave it to you, didn't he? I never asked, I just assumed when he gave it to you, it's because you became the chairman. So I, I, I don't The only thing I, I think on any of this is just to have a vote on it, I mean, I, because I, I really do think, Peter, you've done a good job on these boards. Now I think other of us would like to do some of that work, you know, there's, I wouldn't mind.
Well Dallas, where we, where we ended, I think, or where we ought to end, is see what happens tonight. And then Dave and I can continue to have conversations based upon the outcome.
Fine with me.
Okay, Commissioner Milne, our dutiful scribe, is there anything else we need to address? Do we want to change anything up for item G? That's the Oversight Committee, Mike Hagler serves on that. I think we ought to keep it the same.
Mike, Mike has been on that forever, and he says it rarely ever meets, and
Oh, I might consider that.
And I, I think that, I think that's one that we need to leave Mike on there.
It meets once a year.
Yeah.
Budget-related. Mike does a fine job there.
We'd probably end up just screwing it up, so.
He would rather, he would rather us take it, but I would rather him have it.
Yeah, I think the expertise is why the, some of the other members of that organization like that he's on that. Michelle, I think there's a correction on opioid committee, I think that's Commissioner Coats and myself. Parks Board is Commissioner North.
Just leave me on there for right now, it's just, it's just to leave you on position, so.
Okay. Last call for other comments with respect to board liaison positions.
The only thing I want to say is that if somebody else does want one of the boards that I'm currently on down the road, I'm happy to discuss that, you know, and look at that.
Alright, great. Looking at oh. Okay. Alright, next we have agenda review and legal update with Heather. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that the first matter that we would like to bring to your attention is the Weed and Pest Board members. Currently, three of the members, I believe, their terms expired December thirty-first, and then we have one vacancy. I don't think that we received the nominations and the application packets in time to get this on the agenda for today. But it's my understanding that Weed and Pest really need to have the members that they have provided to you appointed as soon as possible. The Weed and Pest Board of Directors actually sign the checks and make the payments for the, for the district. So, and Mr. Gutierrez and Mr. Jolavet are here and can, can weigh in on that a little bit more if you'd like to hear from them. But it's, it's not on the agenda for this evening, so we would either ask that you amend the agenda, include those appointments, or agree to the appointment, we'll ratify that decision at the next meeting on the twenty-first.
That's what I was gonna ask, is if we could go ahead and keep them in place until we have a chance to to go through and do interviews, if we're going to, and ratify that. Can we, can we do a short extension?
I, I, I don't know off the top of my head, I think it's a little bit problematic, just from the, from the standpoint that the terms, they've, they've expired at this point. I guess if your appointment is maybe retroactive to January first, and then how, for how far along would it go into the, into the future?
Pat, how often is, do you guys have meetings and stuff? I mean, if you can answer, if you can give me a little bit, give us a little background, I'd appreciate it. And just for the record, state your name.
Oh yes, Matt, Matt Jolavet, I'm Supervisor of Natrona County Weed and Pest. I've worked with somebody, thanks for allowing me to speak on this. Yes, we have three board member positions that expired on the thirty-first of December. We meet one time a month. I don't function in the capacity of a CEO of our organization, so all checks are, are signed by them. We, we have submitted those new petitions. Now that the complicating factor we have, this go-around is a, we have one position that was a resignation. And so we need that, at least one of those positions filled for, for the continuity of our organization.
Okay, so.
Chairman, I'm Jason Gutierrez, I'm the Chairman of the Weed and Pest Board. Fifteenth would be the first, next check run, we would have the fifteenth of January. So due to our internal controls, policies, every check requires two board member signatures. And not all board members are signers at the bank, at the bank institution, because all of our board members are then bonded that sign those checks. So I guess it's kind of put us in a little bit of a bind, and we also will give Heather, I think it's the Weed Control Act, has some Wyoming State Statute has some requirements for, for us in January, the first county commissioner meeting.
Okay, so you've got one position that we do need to fill. The resignation?
Four positions that need to be filled.
No, I know, but three of, three of them are because the term was over. You have one that we really need to look at to fill as far as one vacancy.
Excuse me?
Yep. You have, right now you have four spots that are not filled.
That's correct.
But three of them are because your term expired.
Term's expired, okay.
Okay, so, so basically we have one position, I mean, if we go back and we retroactively to January first.
You need one position to continue operations, correct? For your checks, or what do you need?
We, we need one signer at the bank to be, to be appointed. Right now, that's the, our Board Chairman, Jason, that would be the most, that would be the most critical to, to operations. In our Weed and Pest Act, typically these appointments for the, for the positions that expired are typically done the first meeting in January, out of the pool of applicants that we had.
So Mr. Chairman, the Weed and Pest Act, it's a little different from the other boards' members too. It requires the, the District Board to submit nominations to the commission, I believe. And then from those nominations that are submitted to the commissioners, the commissioners will appoint the members. Statutorily, that's supposed to be at the first county commission meeting in January, which would be this one.
Okay, so basically we're just affirming what the Weed and Pest Board is sending to us, is that correct?
I think you could, you would be, have more of a role in the selection if you had more nominations for for members than there were positions, but I think in this particular case, there are just enough members for all of the positions. My understanding is correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Chairman, we believe we have an excellent functioning board and a well-rounded group, but it is difficult to find members that reside within a certain geographical boundaries that are willing to do that. So it's, it's very much a, when we're aware of an opening, we go through a pretty strong recruitment process. And we're to try to go out and recruit individuals that are interested. So it, we feel like the nominees we forwarded are excellent choices for those geographical regions.
And I, I would second those remarks as well.
So I'm trying to figure out the easiest way to get you guys, what you need tonight.
I, we do, we do have those, I've read all the letters that have been supported.
Trying to pull.
Michelle did forward those, I just don't know exactly where they are right now.
So is, is it, I don't know.
And one for, one application and nomination for each here. So we don't have multiple.
Okay. So I was looking for an email or a letter that says, this is what we want you to do, or this is what we would propose. And then tonight, we can change our agenda to say, yes, we'll do that. Because I think we're okay with that, but I, I'm just not seeing that letter or email, unless I missed it.
I have seen it, I'm just not sure which email it was in.
So, okay, so these
Yeah, if I might just direct you to the date of twelve-four. I don't know if you'd like me to say the name on the subject line to assist in finding that, but.
Yeah, let's, let's get the, the names.
Hold on, let me see if I can pull up the
I think. We've got an application from Tony Chappett.
Twelve-four?
Yes.
Yeah.
So there's, keep going. That's the what we received. And then these right here are what we received. So Greg Warder resigned.
Right.
And then Tony Chappett, and then this is what we received.
So all we need tonight is a motion to, a motion to reappoint Jason, Don, and Wes, and then a motion to appoint Tony.
I, I would, I would think that would, that would meet our, our obligation completely, yes.
Without a whole bunch of other candidates for these positions. Is the commission comfortable with that?
Yes.
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 So and do we need to specify if the term ends, when the terms would end, or do we just, are we, are we okay that it would just be for a full new term?
Our, our term limits are listed very completely in the Weed and Pest Act, I think eleven-five-one-oh-four, possibly. So we would just need the names, appointments.
I think, I think we'd be fine, and personally, I'm fine with everybody in doing that. I think we need to just, whatever the motion is, is, is to be able to reference that Weed and Pest Act. You know, our basis for nominating and, and keeping that together.
Yeah, there are proposed motion for the board to consider.
If you could put that together, maybe so that we could have that for a motion, so they can bring that for amendment for the agenda.
So I, I think we're gonna make it happen, we're just trying to work out the final details of it, but to get you where you need to be. Any, any other questions, or counsel, is there anything else we need to?
No, no thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does that sound like a plan?
Sincerely appreciate your flexibility in working with us and keeping, keeping us going on the good fight against weeds in the Trump County.
And pests.
What do you want really, Jason?
And pests. Not just the weeds, it's the pests too.
Both, yes.
A lot of those. A lot of those.
The station is still warm in here. I noticed you still have your coat on.
Not eating enough carbs, I guess.
That's an inside joke, because I saw him downstairs and he said, he was in there sitting on the bench because it was nice and warm.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel, what do we want to talk about next?
Um, we could look at the agenda. I, I think the, really the most significant items that I based on the agenda would be the agreements for the biathlon club.
Madam Attorney, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
And since we have been going back and forth with this for such a long time, and there's some deficiencies that are still up on the, at the biathlon club. You know, one of the things we have in there is the grooming agreement. I was wondering how the commission would feel about taking some of that funding out of that agreement and utilizing it toward correcting the deficiencies, the life and safety issues that they actually have up there, and getting that taken care of, and then going ahead and that being part of our, our process with that agreement. That way we can get it through. I mean, this has been in such a, we haven't made any progress on this in a long time. And it's not because we haven't requested it. And so this way, and right now with Mr. Ross or being out of the country, I'm just trying to think of what's best for the community at this particular time and seeing what we can do to get this accomplished, to get it moving forward.
What, what are we being told about Mr. Ross or signing any agreements?
They're signed.
Well, they are all signed.
Yeah, they're, they're signed, but they
What's the issue?
They are the previous agreement. So the grooming agreement has a cap of $30,000 for this, this coming season or the season we're early. So changing that would require us modifying that, that agreement, and, and the others' parties agreed to the terms of what's in the packet.
Everything's settled?
I believe so. The, what, what we are still having issues with are the compliance issues with the building department. There are still issues up there that have not been addressed yet.
What?
They've got, they've got a, for example, a department heads meeting this morning. They're utilizing a battery connection in a way that could present a life safety issue as a violation of code into the little building, forget which building it is, but I, I guess.
I don't think it would take that much for us to fix it.
Well, well, okay. It might not take much for a contractor to fix it
Well, I mean, I'm terribly.
For the, for the county to fix it, for the county to agree, but to get the other side to agree to it and opening up that can of worms when the agreements have been agreed to in principle and signed by the other side. I'm a little concerned about that. I wouldn't mind earmarking an amount if I knew what that amount was that would cover those things. I'm, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm over my level of anxiety about opening up a can of worms. But for example, if it's an up to $30,000, and if we thought that it would be $5,000 to fix those safety items, then at least maybe we hold that in a, hold that in our back pocket. And, or apply the first $5,000, you know, of their grooming to that.
That's, that's basically what I'm requesting that we do. Is that, I can't see, if I remember right, it's the fuel tanks.
Let me, let me, I'm, I'm pointing to Michael. Michael, Mr. Brown, would you come up and can you give us just a real brief summary of the life safety issues? And I'm not gonna hold you to this, but what level of magnitude the costs or expenses would be to cure those things?
Yeah, so there's a couple of life safety issues. The timing shed is plugged in through an outlet. The cord's been chewed through by vermin. That is currently unplugged and wrapped up. I don't believe they're going to utilize that wall until it's repaired. The major life safety issues are fuel tanks. They have a diesel fuel tank and a gas one. They've been operating these for almost a decade, is what I was told last Friday, in the same manner. There's a solar panel situated on top of the gas lane tank. These are self-contained tanks in secondary containment. It's a code violation. The likelihood of something catastrophic, I mean, these have been operating for 10 years, so if that indicates anything, especially with vapors in the wintertime. However, there's batteries that are sitting on the ground, not in, in containers. I was told Friday that they've, they removed those batteries and store them in the building and only bring them out when they need to pump fuel. They were grooming last Friday, so they were pumping fuel. The concern there is, is when you take the wire connector and connect to that 12-volt battery, if you spark and there's vapors from the gasoline fuel, there's a potential hazard for explosion. And, and so that's a, that's a life safety concern. With them removing the batteries and that removes the hazard when they're not there, but it increases the hazard when they are fueling. And so, you know, the building department brought up this code violation on that.
What's the fix?
So the fix that they discussed is to run power from their building nearby approximately 50 feet. You know, explosive protected type, power spark proof with a, a power switch at the building. I'm not very good at an estimate on that, so I wouldn't want to put a price point on that. But it would be 50 feet in. You're also doing it in the winter, so you're digging through frozen ground to bury that cable and then the hookup, so honestly don't know what that would be. Do you know that there's folks that would like to see the grooming happen over there, obviously? And with the grooming agreement, you know, as long as we get correct reporting and, and records that show exactly what they did and did not do the amount, because we're, we're about probably 60% to 50% of the season left. So, I mean, as long as we have good records, we can, we can account for the funding and not spend that whole amount. It's a matter of allowing them to continue to fuel their vehicles in this manner until it's corrected. I did remind them that they were put on notice not to use these fuel tanks until it was corrected. Obviously, they're aware of the hazard, but we can't sit there and babysit them all the time. So I don't know if they'll continue to do that or not. Once they have the grooming agreement and have funding, I, I think they will start grooming more often. And so therefore they will be fueling more often.
There is another way that they could do that without running that all the way over to the building, too. They could actually put an, uh, an enclosure to keep those batteries in. And then, and then have that shut-off switch directly attached to that.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that.
There are, there are some simple solutions that would be substantially less than 5,000 bucks. I'm guessing probably closer to 2,000. And, and that's even, I believe that's even a high estimate, but I do think that at this point in time, to make everything safe up there, we, we need to, we need to help them out because it seems, it appears that they, they just need some direction on some of this as far as what to do and how to get it done.
In, in that direction, um, can't come from me because I'm not qualified to, to state what happened, so that would come from the building department or the company that provides them fuel or some other professional entity that knows those codes and, and requirements.
On the operating agreement and the grooming agreement, do they require that they operate in accordance with applicable code?
I, there may be a general statement, Mr. Chairman, that they comply with all local and state laws.
So it's in the operating agreement, abide by applicable, all applicable laws, local, local state, federal laws, rules, regs. Item B is on the operating agreement. It's B6, Roman numeral 6. So seems to me that we are justified in not executing an agreement until, because of a non-compliance situation. If we wanted to do that, I know this commission is super tired of this issue. You know, that could increase the speed within which they execute on some of these issues. You know, I, I don't know what the commission thinks about just taking this off the consent agenda and saying, look, we're ready to go, but we can't sign an agreement that says you're gonna comply with rules if you're not. I don't know. At the same time, it's, the individuals we're dealing with may not be motivated sufficiently by that.
And I did provide.
Here's the question I have first. The way you've explained this to me, this is a hazard. I don't like having hazards under my nose that we could be responsible for now that we have notice of it. So why don't we fix it? And then we will take charge out of the money that's coming. Now, we, we've signed some agreements that could be a problem, as Mr. Nicolason pointed out earlier. But I don't think you can just look at this, Mike. You gotta get somebody that's an electrician or a fire department guy to say, you, you people are out of code. It's gonna be shut down, period, the end, unless you fix it immediately.
I think he, yeah.
We don't have a rental agreement or ownership of those fuel cells, so they are not county property. So I don't know what authority we have to actually.
Does the fire department have the authority if they burn down the mountain? Then why doesn't the fire department go up there and tell them this? They're gonna shut it down.
So I
They put them on notice to correct it, as
And gave them how long to do it?
I'm not sure.
I don't know either.
So commissioners, um, are we concerned enough to take it off the consent agenda and have Heather get touch with them and say, listen, if you're not gonna do it within a week, then we're gonna do it and we're gonna backcharge you, or, you know, something of that nature on any of the submittals for grooming that you do. Because, because I'm, I'm a little concerned. I think we have some creative ideas on what we could do from a contractual perspective. But I think that's more time and energy, and who knows if it opens up a can of worms. So if we just take it off the consent agenda, and I don't want to do that, but if we do do it and, and Heather talks with that Mr. Holcher and says, listen, it's gonna be one way or the other, and we gotta know before our next meeting on the 21st or whatever, and we're either, it's either gonna be done by then, and we'll sign the agreements, or, you know, we're gonna make an addendum to the one agreement that says, well, yes, up to $30,000, but we're gonna backcharge them for that, whatever the cost is from our, our contractor that goes out and does it for us.
So here's where I'm frustrated, Mr. Chairman. I'm frustrated because I believe that there's reasonable people on that board. It almost make, when you say this and they're, they do nothing, I, it's, I'm having difficulty with this. Who, who's doing nothing? Why, why would these reasonable people not understand this and get this taken care of? That's what I don't understand.
So the stories I get, I spoke with Mr. Harbison on Friday, on site, is that their electrician has all of this under one permit. The building department or development department says that permit was only for the power pole, the conduit going up the power pole. They corrected. That's been corrected. The roof on the timing shed has been corrected. However, the power to the timing shed and the power to the fuel has yet to be corrected. I would expect Mr. Harbison to be at the meeting tonight because on Friday I notified him that these are on the consent agenda. I do not know the status of them. With them not correcting the fuel, I said they may pull these, these contracts. I don't think you can do the gr, and legal can tell me if this is true or not. I don't think you can do the grooming agreement with them without the operating agreement because I think the grooming agreement directly talks about the operating agreement. And obviously you don't want to do a grooming agreement because they'll be fueling in an unsafe manner.
Commissioner Malm?
What I'd suggest is we take these off the consent agenda, both the grooming and the agreement. If somebody from the club or whoever shows up to talk to us and address this, then cool. But it's just continuation of bad behavior where there, this, this group is not listening to the needs of this board and of parks, and something's gonna have to break here shortly. I mean, we just can't keep operating. And they can't keep operating in this manner. And, and they, they need to follow, if they want paid, they need to follow the, the local rules, regulations, and codes and, and come to the table. This is just ridiculous. I, I, so my suggestion would be to take these off the consent. If we don't hear from anybody at our meeting when we discuss this, then we table it and we wait until the next one. And, I mean, it sucks, but that's where we're at, I think.
Other commissioners, commissioner codes?
I have an agreement with Commissioner Malm. We need to get these questions answered and support their departments that have put so much effort into this.
Yeah, I have a cell phone.
Just have difficulty thinking that these people are ignoring us for some reason.
And if they are, I agree with what's being said here. But I haven't heard anything from them, and, and apparently Mr. Ross isn't even around, so he's not the guy that goes and fixes all this stuff. So somebody, I'm just confused because it sounds so outrageous that these, and I've, I've met these people, they just don't seem unreasonable to me. Can you get him on the phone so we can hear from him?
Well, um.
Before we put something on, take something off that may cause them to have to shut down one of their beats or something up there?
Commissioner Larry, if I may. Picking up the phone and making a call sounds somewhat reasonable because you might actually get, get some indications of where they want to be, but I, I'm concerned about the propriety of that, given that we've been dealing with their council. And, and, and us with our council engaging with them, I think would be borderline unethical for our county attorney. And I think you would recognize also that that puts us in a little bit of a position.
I agree with you. I'd rather go through Holcher. So maybe you can call him before we
Yeah, yeah, if we
Certainly.
If we conclude before 5 o'clock, then maybe you can reach out. Otherwise, I think we ought to take it off consent and take it off the agenda, period. And then allow you to let them know that, you know, there's, there's this issue and see if we can get it resolved. We're, we're down two, but I think they were okay that, yeah, Michael, go.
Just as for upcoming events, I spoke with him on Friday about that. They have no sanctioned races scheduled this year. As for their school district, fourth grade classes coming up, that, that occurs in March and April. So those are down the road, as well as Adventure Day, which I think they renamed. But anyways, that's more in April. So they don't, as far as I know, per the conversation, they don't have any upcoming events. And as for Mr. Chairman and legal, if you would like me to make a phone call to Mr. Harbison and tell him where we're at and that you guys are planning on pulling this off the agenda, I can, I can definitely do that after I leave this meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's a bad idea for both of you to reach out. The situation is that you could both receive positive assurances and then we not have it done. So then we, we get positive assurances that it will be done, but it isn't gonna be done before 5 o'clock, 5:30. So I, I think we just have to take it off, and then I don't, I think it'd be fine for you to contact Mr. Harbison and you to contact Mr. Holcher and, and get it resolved. We do have indemnification provisions in the grooming agreement and maybe the other one, too. We do have some of this stuff that I think protects us. I'm hopeful that there aren't any big issues as they continue to groom and use the fuel tanks, but and I, I think that's likely that we're going to be okay, but I, I think that we're just not going to get it resolved today.
And, and one thing I, just because I've been asked a couple of times about the payment that the commission approved for the last season's grooming. Mr. Holsher asked me on December thirty-first about that and he might have asked me last week as well. That payment was made to them on December sixth. The clerk indicated that a check had been sent to their, the address on East End Road, so that, that payment was made, you know, almost a month ago.
So they ought to have the money to pay the contractor to do the electrical work?
Um, yeah, I was asked that same question Friday by Mr. Harbison and I told him I was unaware of the situation of that payment because honestly, I didn't know. So he was asking, as for the address on East End Road, if that's the venue, I don't know if there's actually any mailboxes there, so I'm not sure where that would have gone.
Mr. Chairman, we would have sent the payment to the same address that we have sent every other payment to.
Okay, so they do, Mr. Rossar used to receive it there, so I will pass that on to Mr. Harbison as well.
All right, well, Michael, thank you very much for your, your patience on this. It would test me, but yeah, the agreement, the grooming agreement has a one-one, one-zero, East End Road. What's the, I mean, hopefully they are receiving mail there. The other one is the same address. So we have to presume that that's, that's correct. It might be wise for you or some, either of you or both of you to confirm that. But anyway, okay, thank you, Michael.
I think with respect to the rest of the agenda, there, there's a resolution amending the resolution that established the Parks Board of Trustees to add Casey in, in place of a former Commissioner Freel to the board. So I think that's it with the, with, with respect to the agenda. I think the only change will be the addition, the removal of the Biathlon Club and then we'll add the Weed and Pest member.
No, I'm sorry, that's the only change on the resolution was the removal of Freel and addition of Casey.
I believe so.
Any questions for Heather regarding the agenda items for tonight? Or, and if, if not, any questions for council about any other legal matter that's not executive? We do have a couple of executive matters to discuss tonight, as I recall.
That, that's correct.
Good. I know one's personnel from our HR department. It's, it's a, it's a minor matter. I think that there's some different litigation threatened or otherwise that we'll talk about, too. Those are the ones that come to mind. I don't know of any real estate or other categories.
Uh, I think there may be a legal, for the purposes of legal advice.
Okay.
Just a discussion if there's time that we would like to have with you as well.
Okay. So Commissioner Roundtable, Commissioner Laird? Or should we make the new guy go first? Let's make the new guy go first. Commissioner Coats?
Well, I don't really have much at the, at this moment, so.
What have you been doing? It's been six days.
I know, right? I mean, we could get into a whole bunch of stuff, but I don't think it's, it's the right time.
Okay, okay. Now Commissioner Laird.
I think all of you guys are great guys, every single one of you. Have we had some difficulties? Yes, we have. I think sometimes when we have difficulties, we're being somebody other than who we really are. Now, I'm saying that as I'm the oldest guy here and so, you know, we all have a certain amount of time on this planet. And one of the things that personally I would like to do is speak kindly. Take care of my family and be, and be very good to the people of this county. Protect, protect them. And that means everybody. That means the rich and the poor and everybody to me. And so what I'm hoping is next year, this current year, is that the commissioners can show respect to each other at all times and realize we're all just human beings doing the best we can. And that we have different ages, different levels of intelligence, different levels of knowledge. And I think when we really truly work together, we can be invincible, really. And we can do what the people want us to do. That's my feeling. That's my belief.
Thanks, Commissioner North.
I think as a county, we've had more than our share of, of unexpected issues over the last year outside. Things that have happened around the county, things that are still going on around the county that we've had to address that have I think it's stressed every one of us out in the past, pending lawsuits. Just a lot of questions and I know I've, I had more phone calls this last year than, than I had in the previous three. So I'm hoping that that will slow down this year. I'm very optimistic with the new administration as far as what they're going to do for oil and gas production and some of the other things, and mainly the regulations and reducing the regulations across this, this country with the BLM, with some of the other stuff, getting some of the coal leases renewed, just different things. I'm, that, that's why I'm really optimistic about it, is looking forward to that. And I really, I really think that we've got a good chance to get started and jump on board and support things. There's a lot of opportunities that, a lot of different groups that are looking at Casper right now as far as coming in here to set up their operations, to set up manufacturing and different things. And I really hope that we can get things set up so that we can draw all those companies in here and continue to draw them in here because that's going to benefit the entire county. That's going to benefit, help keep our kids here at home, give them jobs, give them opportunities. And I think that's something that as a commission, that we should support wherever it is beneficial to the county and not just everything that comes across because all opportunities are not good. So that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Mill.
Honestly, right now I don't have much, so.
Briefly, we have legislative WCCA meeting the week of the twenty, the twentieth, but I think that it starts on the twenty-second, if I'm correct. Twenty-second, Commissioner Coats, are you planning on going? Excellent, because there's a training session that is super valuable. Commissioner Laird, will you be able to make Cheyenne? I hope you can, and here's why. You talk about us working together. You've not been able to make as many WCCA meetings as you might have liked. This is the one to make, I think, of the entire year because some of our legislative dinner, where we host our Neutrona County delegation, is super critical and the timing is really good for us to make an impact on our local delegation of bills that affect our constituents. So I really hope all the commissioners can make that legislative dinner and I hope we had a good turnout last year. It wasn't a hundred percent, but I was pleased that we had such a good turnout. So the dinner's on the twenty-third. It's really important if we can make that dinner because I can talk to them blue in the face and maybe only half of them will listen to me. Some of the others may listen to you guys. So we're doing our job for our community and we're really impactful that particular night, so hopefully we can all make it. It's going to be a busy session, yeah. Great. Thanks for arranging that and thanks for the reminder. And if you can't make all, all of the days, then really try to make that night. Yesterday, Commissioner North and I attended a group of community leaders. It was in regard to an organization called Radiant Energy and it pertains to the, this company potentially moving to Casper and, and starting a manufacturing facility. It is energy-related. It's uranium-related. That is energy and uranium in particular. We have deep roots in Neutrona County with uranium and I, I hope that we can roll out the red carpet for them, frankly. They are very serious about Casper. We're on the shortlist and if we could land Radiant Energy, it could be a, a game changer for fifty years for this community and there would be most likely additional ancillary users kind of in that same uranium or energy field. And, you know, we're talking, you know, hundreds of jobs and, and many hundreds of jobs. So as that solidifies, please, I'd ask you to do your research and support it. They had a little flyer and I can, I'll get that to Michelle and pass it out or make sure that it circulated. Really impressive group of people. Yeah, we made a lot of progress last year and I'm super proud of the commission for the, the work done. And I'm optimistic about the work that we're going to get done as a commission, not just as individuals. And so I think that, you know, we can turn the page, whatever happens with respect to leadership, but look at it as a new year and everybody do your best job for this community and all the citizens of Neutrona County and, and I think we'll make our constituents proud. That's all I had, so I think we will adjourn until five P M.